Members, it's the appointed time and we have a quorum. This is a session for the Security Bureau. Let's welcome Secretary for Security, Mr. Tang and his team. I will invite Mr. Tang to give a brief presentation and then members can put questions. If you would like to put questions, please press the button now. Before I invite the Secretary for Security to make a presentation, I will remind members that they should leave some time for the Secretary to give an answer. If time is running out, I will ask the Secretary to give you a written reply instead. That would be fairer to other colleagues. Each member will have four minutes to put questions. Thank you, Chairman. In the draft estimates for the new financial year allocation under Security Bureau's responsibility will be fifty-eight point nine billion dollars. The allocation accounts for seventy-seven point six percent of the total government expenditure, which is similar to the figure last year. The draft estimates represent an increase of seven point one percent or three point nine billion dollars from the revised estimate last year. The increase in expenditure can be mainly attributed to the increase in personnel-related expenses due to filling of vacancies and equipment. Second, one-time expenditure for procuring equipment, for instance, replacement of self-contained open-circuit breathing apparatus sets and portable radio transceivers, procurement and replacement of ambulances, fire appliances, fireboats, and police launches, installation of CCTV in preventing violent and serious crimes, and so on. And short-term expenditure for strengthening existing services, for instance, for enhancing the capacity in handling the upsurge in applications for Hong Kong at the D C cards due to COVID- nineteen. Now, I will report to the Finance Committee on the major work to be undertaken by the disciplinary forces of Hong Kong. As regards safeguarding national security, an important milestone this year is the enactment of the Safeguarding National Security Ordinance, the SNSO. The SNSO complements with the Hong Kong National Security Law and other relevant local legislations and establishes a complete and effective legal system, serving as the strongest defense for safeguarding national security in the Hong Kong SAR. After enactment of the SNSO, it is essential to provide for public education and introduce the legislation to external parties. In addition to continuing the existing national security education initiatives, efforts will be made to promote SNSO to the general public. Relevant information will also be incorporated into our online virtual exhibition with a view to encouraging the public to gain a better understanding of the legislation. Apart from education, our law enforcement agencies will continue to take investigation and law enforcement actions against acts and activities suspected of endangering national security and enhance collection and analysis of intelligence in order to prevent, suppress, and impose punishments for acts and activities endangering national security. As regards crimes, the overall crime in two thousand and twenty-three increased by twenty-eight point nine percent as compared with last year. This is mainly due to the fact that fraud cases, which account for more than forty percent of all crimes, recorded an increase of approximately forty percent. As we were still amid the epidemic in the first half of two thousand and twenty-two, a number of traditional crime figures dropped to a particularly low level. As society resumed normalcy in two thousand and twenty-three, most traditional crimes recorded an increase when compared with two thousand and twenty-two. But quite a number of them registered a fairly significant decrease when compared with two thousand and eighteen, such as robbery and assault, the year before the outbreak of the Black Lives Violence and the epidemic. We will closely monitor crime trends, flexibly deploy resources to intensify efforts to combat crimes, in particular against deception. Police will continue to step up enforcement and enhance prosecution efficiency. In order to rigorously combat the use of stooge accounts by deception syndicates in committing crimes, applications for enhanced sentencing will be made. Approaches such as interception of fraudulent payments and upstream intervention will be adapted to minimize victims' losses. Furthermore, the police will continue to raise anti-deception awareness of the members of public through advertisements. On enhancing the cybersecurity of critical infrastructures, enhancing the cybersecurity of critical infrastructure is conducive to strengthening Hong Kong's favorable business environment and position as an international financial center. In view of this increasing risk of global cyber attacks, we will enact legislation to clearly define the statutory cybersecurity obligations for operators of critical infrastructure. We plan to consult the Panel on Security and Stakeholders in around the mid-year and aim to introduce the draft legislation by the end of this year. On the counterterrorism front, apart from strengthening intelligence gathering and enhancing departmental response capability, the intra-departmental counterterrorism unit will continue to focus on promoting public education and encouraging members of the public to provide information relating to terrorism and violence. On non-refoulement claims, with the update of the removal policy by the government in December two thousand and twenty-two, the efficiency of removal has been greatly enhanced. In two thousand and twenty-three, nearly one thousand eight hundred unsubstantiated claimants were removed from Hong Kong, representing an increase of sixty-three percent compared to two thousand and twenty-two. Although there was a substantial upsurge in the number of non-ethnic Chinese illegal immigrants, N E C I Is, in the second half of two thousand and twenty-three, as a result of the strengthened joint enforcement actions by the law enforcement agencies of Guangdong and Hong Kong, the number of N E C I Is arrested and new claims received in two thousand and twenty-four February have decreased by nearly ninety percent and seventy percent respectively from the peak. On facilitating the flow of people between the two sides, normal travel between the mainland and Hong Kong has fully resumed since sixth of February two thousand and twenty-three. Boundary control points, B C Ps, have been operating smoothly and orderly. We will continue to provide efficient clearance services for travelers and review the need of extending the operating hours of clearance services. In developing new B C Ps in the future, we will actively explore the adoption of new clearance modes to enhance passenger clearance efficiency, including the implementation of the collaborative inspection and joint clearance mode. On facilitating the flow of talents, the government maintains an open immigration policy to proactively attract talents and facilitate business while upholding effective immigration control. The government has relaxed the visa policy for Vietnamese talents to come to Hong Kong for employment with effect from October two thousand and twenty-three. Besides, we have relaxed the criteria for Vietnamese applying for multiple journey visit visa. Following the implementation of the new measure, the average number of forsetment visa application approved is about six times the number in two thousand and nineteen. We've also relaxed the visa policy for Laotian and Nepali talents for employment, training, and study in Hong Kong with a view to promoting exchanges on various fronts with talents from these places. On fire safety in all buildings, the government is stepping up the work of amending the fire safety buildings ordinance to empower the government to carry out fire safety improvement works for owners and to recover relevant fees from them afterwards. Our target is to submit the amendment bill to the Legislative Council for scrutiny this year. We will also expedite our work with a view to enhancing or advancing the submission of the amendment bill by two months. On custodial work and rehabilitation of persons in custody, P I C, the Correctional Services Department, C S D, will continue to proactively introduce technologies to improve the efficiency and security level of prison management. Besides, C S D will strive to enhance its rehabilitation programs to help persons in custody rebuild positive values and seek wider support for rehabilitation work from all sectors of the community. On promoting youth development, S B has been committed to raising the number of active members of its youth-uniformed group. The aim is to cultivate young people's physical and mental health, positive thinking, law-abiding, and national security awareness, patriotism, and sense of discipline and team spirit. Last year, the active membership of youth-uniformed groups of the six Discipline Services Department increased by thirty percent to over seven thousand four hundred members. On combating crimes, on combating drugs. In views of the upward trend in cocaine use, the government launched a TV announcement in the public interest in January two thousand and twenty-four to combat cocaine use and will strengthen support for drug treatment and rehabilitation services. Law enforcement agencies will continue to monitor the global trend and spare no effort in combating drug offenses. Chairman, the representatives from the departments in I R A are pleased to take questions from members. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. There are eighteen members who have pressed the button. I will read out the names of the members who have pressed the button. First, Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Chow Soo Cheung, Reverend Peter Coon, Mr. Chan Pu Leng, Ms. Carmen Khan, Mr. Kenneth Leng, Mr. Michael Tian, Dr. Te K Chiu Yun, Ms. Chan Yip Ming, Dr. So Cheng Wing, Mr. Lam Sang Kun, Mr. Benson Look, Mr. Edna Wong, Ms. Elizabeth Quat, Mr. Lam Chan Sing, Professor Priscilla Leng, Mr. Chan Hackett, and Ms. Maggie Chan. First, Dr. Johnny Ng, please. Thank you. I would like to ask about S B eighty-seven. On the police's effort on combating deception, the police courts enhancing cybersecurity and combating technology crime as one of the top operational priorities. About A D C C and C S T C B, there is an increase of manpower by forty-nine and ninety people. As the online deception cases have been on the rise, will the departments need more resources? If you do need more resources, I believe that electrical members will support you. The number of investment crimes have increased from last year. There is an increase of three thousand percent. The amount lost amounted to about three billion dollars, and there are some five thousand one hundred and five cases of such kind of investment scams. Can the Security Bureau share with us the progress of your effort in combating the crime? Thank you. Two questions. Security Bureau, perhaps I would defer to the Commissioner of Police to take the question. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ng, for the question. Let me talk about the manpower situation. Actually, apart from the A D C C and the E H U P, various bureaus, including C S T C B, F I I B, and the regional headquarters, along with their investigation teams, work on combating deceptions. Apart from colleagues from the Crimes Bureau, the P R B and the P C R O of District Police Stations also work on the publicity and education in this area. Some stakeholders, including the Communication Authority, H K M A, the banking sector, and the color communications companies also work with us. For example, there are colleagues of ten banks or people of ten banks actually are stationed at the A D C C for us to handle deception cases in a more speedy manner. We have also new measures on anti-deception. We have scam meter plus, and we have added three new functions to the applications in March or in February. As mentioned, in two thousand and twenty-three, the number of investment scams started some six thousand three hundred and thirty cases, including offline and online investment scams. The amount lost exceed five point three nine billion dollars. That accounts for about one-third of the, or two-thirds of the total amount lost. Some two thousand three hundred and forty-two involve cryptocurrency. One point six billion dollars lost relates to the J P E X case. For the J P E X case, we received two thousand six hundred and thirty-six reports involving some one point six billion dollars. We have arrested seventy-two people. The amount rose in amount to about two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Mr. Chow Soo Cheung.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on my question, S B one zero nine. Combating illegal workers. There are more and more illegal workers working in Hong Kong. According to the government's reply, the number of illegal workers arrested increased to one thousand three hundred and four in two thousand and twenty-three, and there is an increase of forty-seven percent compared to the year before. The Immigration Department has mounted a number of operation against illegal workers. They have mounted some seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-eight operations against illegal workers. There are five crime syndicates that have been destroyed, and there are some illegal workers who work as dish cleansers. Some illegal workers work in the renovation and fitting-out sector. I think that is difficult for the law enforcement officers to detect such kind of a crime. For, for example, illegal workers working as renovation workers in private residential developments. How will the administration enhance their effectiveness of their law enforcement action? And will they work with the property management offices or companies? On the prosecution of employers of illegal workers, in two thousand and twenty-three, only one hundred and nine employers have been prosecuted. The number of illegal workers prosecuted have been on the rise. But why is the number of prosecution in two thousand and twenty-three lower than in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, twenty-two for employers? And why is the number for illegal workers higher?
Thank you. Both questions are on the measures to crack down on employments of illegal workers, the number of people prosecuted. I will invite the Director of Immigration to answer the two questions. Thank you, Member, for your questions. The Immigration Department spared no efforts in cracking down on illegal worker cases. In two thousand and twenty-three, we have conducted seven thousand two hundred and forty-eight operations and arrested one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four people. In the first three months of the year, we have conducted some five thousand operations for this purpose. We estimate that some twenty thousand operations will have been conducted by the end of this year. We adopted multi-point approach. We would analyze intelligence, and we would also conduct online patrol. When employers are recruiting for illegal workers, it is usually done by advertising online. So we would conduct online patrol to gather intelligence and conduct sting operation. It seems that the number of employers charged has decreased. It depends on the number of illegal workers hired by the employer. If one employer recruits a large number of illegal workers, that will explain the decrease in the number. Now, in January this year, a convicted employer was sentenced to nineteen months of imprisonment by the court. It shows the severity of the crime and how hard we are cracking down on these crimes. Thank you. Next, Reverend Peter Coon. Thank you, Chairman. My question is on reply one three five. How we are helping released prisoners to reintegrate into society? Now, in the past few years, many people were incarcerated because of radical behaviors. Now, to help them rebuild the correct value, the Correctional Services Department has launched a program to help them under the Ethics College. So how many people have received help under the program? And how many of them are persons convicted after the two thousand and nineteen Black Lives Violence saga? Thank you, Secretary. Concerning the rehabilitation program, may I invite the Commissioner of Correctional Services to answer? Thank you. Now, to help build, rebuild positive values for persons incarcerated, we launched the program in November last year. As at the thirty-first of March this year, in the past two years, some one thousand three hundred and fifty persons incarcerated joined the program voluntarily. Some seventy-five percent of them were involved in Black Lives Violence. On participation rates, as at the thirty-first of March this year, some six hundred and ten convicted persons of Black Lives Violence cases have joined the program. Ninety-four percent of them have participated in the program. Now, according to their feedback, they have a very positive view on the program. It shows, it shows that the prisoners embrace the program warmly. So that is the Project Path. So there were one hundred and forty-four prisoners released. So after two years, two years after release, the reoffending rate is just eight, uh, one point eight percent. Compared with other prisoners, the reoffending rate is seven point seven percent. So for participants under the Project Path program, the reoffending rate is ten times lower than other prisoners. It shows how effective the program is. Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Chan Pu Leng.
Thank you, Chairman. My own question, reply two seven, uh, five on non-refoulement claim. According to the figure, by the end of two thousand and twenty-four April, twenty-five thousand sixty-seven non-refoulement claims were received by the Immigration Department. If you look at the nationality of the claimants, Vietnamese claimants accounts for six thousand one hundred and forty-nine cases, twenty-four percent. Why do we have more Vietnamese non-refoulement claimants? This year, the government has relaxed the entry visa for Vietnamese talents. So how can we make sure that the number of Vietnamese non-refoulement claims would not be, would not increase because of this relaxation? Concerning the cost on dealing with non-refoulement claims, in the, in years two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-four, the estimate is one point five one billion dollars. Half of it expands on humanitarian assistance. So in this area, is there any room for minimizing the cost? Now, question three one nine one on deception cases. Now, for young people between the age of sixteen and twenty, this is the group with the highest involvement in deception. So what measures are the governments implementing to prevent young people from committing deception crimes? Non-refoulement claims and deception crime, Secretary.
I will first reply on the question of visas for Vietnamese and also humanitarian assistance, and I will invite the Commissioner of Police to answer the last question. Now, we have taken due consideration before deciding to relax the visa arrangements for Vietnamese talents. We have considered the number of non-refoulement claims as well. Most of the claimants entered Hong Kong via illegal channels. Before the relaxation of the visa arrangements, we also had Vietnamese businessmen and talents coming into Hong Kong. It's just that we imposed a stricter requirements on the immigration of Vietnamese. After the relaxation measure, it would facilitate Vietnamese businessmen and talents to come into Hong Kong to work. The benefits significantly outweigh that on the increase in non-refoulement claims. But of course, we will keep tab on the situation. On offering humanitarian assistance, right? You are right. Fifty-one percent of the estimates on non-refoulement claims expands on humanitarian assistance. So for each claimant, we offer one thousand two hundred dollar in terms of food subsidy to the claimants. So these are in the form of food voucher rather than cash. Now, for each adult or with a child, the rent, the rental allowance is seven hundred and fifty dollars. So altogether, a claimant on its own would get one thousand five hundred dollars. With a child, the claimant and the child would get one thousand five hundred dollars plus seven hundred and fifty dollars. So this would not be paid in cash. It would be given to the I S S for deployment. And also, there is some three hundred dollars subsidies in utilities and also two hundred to two hundred and forty dollars in transportation fee. Again, they are not dispersed in cash. So the level of assistance is just, is just enough for the claimants to maintain a reasonable living standard in Hong Kong, but we are not trying to encourage more people to come. Ms. Carmen Khan. Thank you, Chairman. Zero one nine and zero six six. Zero one nine, cybersecurity of critical infrastructure and the relevant legislative amendments. I have been urging the governments to enhance protection for critical infrastructure since year two thousand and twenty-two. The government mentions that legislative amendments would be introduced later this year. So the Bureau sets, it would deploy existing resources to enhance cybersecurity for critical infrastructure, and also an office would be set up. So are you going to collaborate with the Cybersecurity Bureau? Is this a work led by the Security Bureau or the police force? Will all departments under the Security Bureau be involved? Now, sixty-six. Detection rate for technology crime is low, between eight point eight percent and nine point nine percent. Now, compared with the past, the number has tripled. In two thousand and, two thousand and twenty-one, there were six, uh, one thousand, sixteen thousand. Two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four thousand, and last year even more. So crime syndicates would operate their scamming operations from afar, from jurisdiction, with poor law and order. So we have to enhance the awareness and alertness of our citizen. So you said some six hundred and ninety million dollars has been approved by the political to enhance education of the public. So how are we doing in terms of heightening the awareness in the public? Secretary? Thank you. I will take the question on cybersecurity, and Mr. Raymond Seal will talk about the detection rate for technology crime. Now, the legislative amendments seeks to impose statutory obligations on cybersecurity on the operators of critical infrastructure. Critical infrastructure includes water and gas utilities and also the banking system, banking system. It does not affect S M Es. We heard that these operators would establish dedicated departments to uphold, to maintain cybersecurity, and also to conduct drill and cyber audit. The Security Bureau would be the leading bureau for this effort. We would be underpinned by the Cybersecurity Bureau and the police force. And also, the O G C I O also has an important role to play. It will set a standard for cybersecurity and also assess the standard of the relevant operators. I invite Mr. Raymond Seal to talk about the detection rate.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Khan, for the question. Regarding the low detection rate for cyber crimes, as mentioned, a lot of syndicates are located overseas. And a lot of victims only realize that they fell prey to deception after some time, and only by then would they make a report. But then usually, at that time, the some that have been scammed would have some that have been scammed would have been transferred to other places. When we investigate these cases, not a lot of organizations in other countries are actually cooperative with us. And that affects the progress of our investigation. We have to step up publicity and education on anti-deception. Usually, it's very difficult for us to intercept the fund after they've been sent elsewhere. Sometimes the victims only make a report after they have um transferred the money for a week or a month. There are three main focuses on anti-deception. We have to take enforcement action. We have to in, collect intelligence, conduct publicity and education. Apart from these, stakeholders are very important. For example, telecommunications companies and the banking sector are crucial in our anti-deception efforts. That is why we have been uh trying to devise more anti-deception measures together with these stakeholders in accordance with our trend. We want members of the public to pay attention to our anti-deception advertisements. And we ask the people to also remind the people close to them that they should not fall prey to deception. Next, Mister Kenneth Lang.
Thank you. As mentioned by the security uh for, Secretary for Security in the opening remarks, there are a lot of youth uniformed groups. I would like to ask about S B one three six, one four zero and one four five. Some numbers are set out in the administration's reply. Can the government let us know about the number of members in the youth uniformed groups? There are some seven thousand active members, I know. Is that an increase or decrease from last year? Has the government analyzed the reasons for the increase and decrease of active members in youth uniformed groups? Is there any exemplary uh examples that we can learn from? In reply S B one four five, it is mentioned that three point zero four million dollars will be reserved for the Hong Kong Air Cadet Corps to nurture young leaders and train more talents for the aviation industry of Hong Kong. I'm glad to see that Hong Kong A C C has a dedicated funding. I wonder if other youth uniformed groups enjoy the same treatment. Secretary, two questions, please. Regarding the number of members of you, youth uniformed groups, the number at um in end two thousand and twenty three compared to end two thousand and twenty two is four percent higher. That is one hundred and sixty nine thousand members more. We touch importance to number of active members. It went from five thousand seven hundred odd members in two thousand and twenty two to seven thousand four hundred odd members in two thousand and twenty three. That's an increase of about thirty percent. We think that the number of active members would more accurately reflect the situation with youth uniformed groups. We want to enhance young people's positive thinking, the leadership skills and so on. We have also stepped up patriotism, national security, education among members of youth uniformed groups. A lot of these members participate in local training. I want to point out that in two thousand and twenty three, there are some two thousand six hundred members of youth uniformed groups that have gone on to the mainland for training, and that's a very important point. There is also exchanges uh among different youth uniformed groups. There are some crossovers of, say, foot drill events. A lot of the events are participated by more than two or three youth uniformed groups. You ask, well, about Hong Kong Air Cadet Corps. Well, for the youth corps, um for the police and the C S D, there is dedicated colleagues who are responsible for managing the youth corps. For some of the other youth uniformed groups, they have um separate resources to carry out the same duties. We will make sure that there is enough resources for young people under these youth uniformed groups. Some honorary chairman and consultant would donate to these you, uniformed groups as well. Thank you. Next, Mister Michael Tian.
Thank you, Chairman. For the fire alarm number three at New Lucky Building in Jordan, some five fatalities were recorded. In end two thousand and twenty three, there are still a number of buildings who have not improved their fire service installations and equipments. There are some nine thousand five hundred buildings that have not followed the fire abatement notices. There are still some one hundred eighty thousand notices that are outstanding and that have not been followed. Without a reasonable excuse, if the buildings do not uh follow the fire abatement notices, the Fire Services Department would hold these buildings accountable and the owners would be subject to penalty. Last year, the secretary said that they would amend the legislation to empower the Fire Services Department to carry out the duty set out in the fire safety abatement notices and recover the relevant fees from them afterwards. Now, the Buildings Department is issuing some mandatory building inspection order. And the violation of such order could attract an imprisonment term of two years to three years. But for the non-compliance of fire hazard abatement notices, the penalty went from twenty five thousand dollars and five, fifty thousand dollars to some one hundred thousand dollars and two hundred thousand dollars. Now, the fire door sometimes cost ten thousand dollars. And if the penalty and fine is just a hundred thousand dollars maximum, then sometimes the judge will only hand down a fine of thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars. Now, you say that you will recover the cost after you have improved the equipments or fire safety works. How come there is only fine for non-compliance of mandatory building inspection order and only imprisonment, uh imprisonment term is attracted by the mandatory um building inspection order but not the month compliance of fire hazard abatement notices? There are some three hundred and sixty people who have died from fire last year. Will you increase the penalty for violation of, of our safety buildings ordinance? Because the consequences of fire could be very dire. It, sometimes fire would break out and people die because of the lack of means of escape and other reasons. Secretary.
We have issued some thirty six thousand or three hundred and sixty thousand fire hazard abatement notices. Some forty percent have complied with the order, sixty percent have not. Among the sixty percent of the buildings that have not complied with the notices, it's not that they are not complying with the order, but they are still carrying out the work. There are some two hun- two thousand nine hundred and fifty um buildings that have not complied with the notices and we have charged them. We will see if we will have to increase the penalty. Just on Mister Tian, why the uh non-compliance of such abatement notices will not attract imprisonment? Well, this is different from the um mandatory building inspection orders because windows falling down from a unit would kill someone, for example. But for fire hazard abatement notices, it would in, for all, for example, not putting in place a fire hose or fire doors. It does not involve personal responsibility. If we cannot identify a person responsible, then we cannot uh imprison anyone. Still, we plan, plan to amend the fire safety buildings ordinance, including uh putting in place imprisonment terms for people who obstruct the owners' incorporation to put in place fire safety equipments. Mister Tian. How many um S D U owners are there in Hong Kong? If im- um prison terms is involved, then they would improve their fire safety equipments. I think that is not reasonable that the uh non-compliance of fire hazard abatement notices would not attract prison term. Well, I would like to clarify. If there are miscellaneous items obstructing the fire escape at the rear staircase, for example, who should we hel- hold accountable for such kind of an obstruction? Should we hold the owners incorporated, incorporated owners accountable or the property management companies accountable? Can we just install C C T V to see who put the miscellaneous items at the rear staircase to obstruct the fire escape? This is not a debate. I hope that the secretary will consider my suggestion. Thank you. Next, Doctor Takee Yun. I have three questions. Uh S B zero nine seven. The police procured equipments and firearms. And I ask about the estimates on such kind of an expenses. And the police said that um covidat- these information is confidential because it has to do with their operations. I don't think that the procurement of equipment is directly related to the operational deployment details. We would be able to see how many, for example, guns that you have purchased. I don't think that such reason is reasonable. Can you let us know about, for example, the increase in terms of the number of equipments that you have purchased? Can you just give us more information to assess if the figure is reasonable? I would also like to ask about S B one six nine on the number of persons with disabilities in various correctional institutions. Last year, the figure stood at two hundred and twenty nine, this year, four hundred and seventy four. There are more and more persons with disabilities that have been incarcerated. Do you have relevant facilities to make sure that they are well taken care of? I also have some questions regarding C C T V. C C T V is useful um for detecting crime, but we also have to take into account personal privacy. Has the government worked with the Commissioner of Personal Data? Three questions.
And, thank you. Concerning procurements of weapons and C C T V, I'm going to answer these questions. And we invite the Correctional Services to talk about the last question. The weapons used by the police force and other disciplinary services is not appropriate information to be disclosed because that would facilitate people with ulterior motive to harm our, to endanger national security, to devise countermeasures. This is very risky, not just the police force in Hong Kong. The police departments and the armies in other jurisdictions would be very careful about such information as well. And in installation of C C T V, we have consulted the Commissioner for, for privacy to ensure that all the privacy guidelines are complied with, so be assured. Commissioner of Correctional Services, Mister Wong. Concerning the management of persons with mental disabilities or mental illness, the C S D has sufficient manpower to take care of the incarcerated persons. The H A would arrange for medical offices from the Castle Peak Hospital to consult, to provide consultation uh for patients and prisoners in the Xialang Psychiatric Center. Now, we have thirty five enrolled nurses and forty, uh forty one uh registered nurses. These are all nurses with the qualification to take care of mental, uh people with mental illnesses. Now, the secretary said he's worried that um the enemies would know about the kind of weapons used by the police. Fine, but what about the increase compared with last year's budget, Secretary? These are also risky figures because the other parties can make a guess from the statistics, so it is not appropriate to disclose the figures. Miss Chan Yudung, thank you. Reply zero zero seven about the frontier areas. Now, many people have made use of the Hengyin Way Boundary Control Points to cross the boundary. And I, I applaud the Immigration Department's, the arrangement is very effective. Concerning the reply on Lock Machao Spur Line, I am disappointed. Residents in Santin unable to use the Lock Machao Station downstairs of their home. They need to use another station to board the Israel line. This is not satisfactory. Now, with the Santin Tenno Post Commissioning, there will be many, there will be a lot of population intake. Now, the current capacity of the Lock Machao Spur Line cannot meet the demand. Now, for the Law Wu Station, there is an arrangement for residents nearby to use this station to board the Israel line. So what about Lock Machao? I hope the governments can give the residents in Santin some help, Secretary. The Lock Machao M T R Station is just the same as other boundary control points like Law Wu. So the purpose of that station is for cross-bunchery crossing. So it shouldn't be used by residents seeking to go to the urban areas. Now, with the northern metropolis development, there will be a lot more activities happening in Lock Machao. So when the loop area is being developed, can we implement an arrangement so that residents near the Lock Machao Station can also make use of the station to switch to other means of public transport? But that will also be part of our study. Doctor Shou Chuanwing. Thank you, Chairman. My question is about reply one two eight. So that's my question. The estimated number of inspections of fire service installations and equipments for two thousand twenty four, the number only stood as two hundred fifty nine thousand, representing a decrease of over twenty thousand inspections compared with the previous two years. In the previous two years, there were some two hundred eighty thousand inspections conducted. So your reply said the decrease can be explained by baskets of factors. Or I'm not, I'm just a layman. I don't know what that means. But if you look at the terrible fire at the New Lucky But if you look at the terrible fire at the new Lucky House, it brings about several questions. Now, the O C of the building failed to comply with the fire hazard abatement's notice for eighteen years. Why wasn't the O C prosecuted? The secretary said a legislative amendments proposal is down the road. So will you consider imprisonment sentence for offenders? If you look at the current punishment for failure to comply with fire hazard abatement's notice, it's just twenty-five thousand dollars. Or you, it would cost you some thirty or forty thousand dollars to install the fire installations. So I would chance my luck and simply not install it, if that's the case. I believe that after the legislative amendments, there will be a stronger deterrent under the law. But how can we make sure that an incident like the new Lucky House would not happen again? Thank you. Three questions. The issue on imprisonment has been asked, but Secretary, any supplement? On inspections, fire service installations inspections, I would advise the Commissioner, the Director of Fire Services to answer. Concerning the O C, which failed to comply with the abatement's notice for two decades. As I said, we have been following up with the case. There was an O C and they engaged, they contracted to install the fire service installations. But in the end, they failed. So the situation was not ideal. Concerning why there is no imprisonment sentence under the offense I have explained already. Now, we are proposing to increase the fine to one hundred thousand dollars. We also have a daily fine. For every day that the notice is not complied with, the offender will be penalized another twenty thousand dollars per day. Concerning the fire in Jordan. On one hand, we will speed up the legislative amendments exercise on the fire surface building ordinance. And after that, the government will be able to carry out fire safety improvement works for owners and to recover the relevant fees plus a fine afterwards. And also, we are going to quadruple the fine. We hope that the proposal would be introduced into Legco soon. Mr. Yang, Director of Fire Services. Thank you. The estimations of two hundred and sixty thousand inspections. Now, it comprises two parts. First, inspections of F S Is, fire service installations and equipments. So this is at a similar level with last year, one hundred eighty thousand. The second part involves inspection of new buildings, railworks, and also the free runway projects. Now, with most, with the majority of these projects completed, the number will climb down this year. So that explains the decrease. In the past three years, concerning number of inspections conducted on new equipments, there is a drop of sixteen thousand. So we estimate a decrease in number of inspections conducted this year. But it doesn't mean that we are conducting less inspections on fire installations. Mr. Ambrose Lam. The fire at the new Lucky House is so scary. So that's why several members have asked questions on the issue of fire safety. Mr. Michael Tian and Dr. So mentioned a question for the government's enforcement. Now, my question is, the fire abatement's notice was not complied with for sixteen years. Then why are the departments still approved the license on gas houses? So before approving the application, did these departments check with the fire safety department? Now, reply 78. Last year, there were some three thousand six hundred phone scams. There is an increasing trend. Many of these deception cases were conducted via Hong Kong phone numbers. Now, the police would track down the accounts holder of these stooge accounts and intercept fraudulent payments and conduct scam intervention. So besides these, has the police force offered a channel for the local public to report suspicious phone numbers? Now, these phone numbers are supposed to be registered under real names. So will you track down the criminal? The first question, I will advise the Commissioner of Police to answer. On old buildings' fire safety, through legislative amendments, we are going to enhance the standard of fire safety of these buildings to a modern standard. But it doesn't mean that these old buildings are too dangerous for residents to live in. It just means that the fire safety standard is not up to the modern standard, and we are requiring them to catch up. Concerning hotel or hostel licenses, approval conditions include whether fire service, fire hazard abatement's notices have been complied with. So the relevance departments have a responsibility to check. Phone scam, Mr. Raymond Xu. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ambrose Lam, for your question. You ask whether there are channels for members of the public to report dubious phone numbers. There are. As I mentioned, we have the Scam Meter Plus. That's a phone app. It was launched on the twenty-sixth of February, where three functions have been added. One such function is exactly a reporting channel for members of the public to report suspicious websites and suspicious calls. Between the twenty-sixth of February and the eleventh of April, in the span of one and a half months, we have received some nineteen thousand reports of suspicious calls. These are reports made via the Scam Meter Plus. On average, four hundred and thirty-four reports were made. So we encourage the members of the public to actively report suspicious calls and websites so as to expand the database within the Scam Meter Plus. With a large enough database, as long as the suspicious phone number is within the database and you have our app on your phone, and when such a call is made to you from that phone number, you will be alerted that this may be a scam call. Concerning our work to follow up on these phone scams under the real name registration system. In September two thousand twenty-two, we have established a task force with the relevant telecommunications network operators. So we have been devising ways to prevent phone scams. That's why we are witnessing a decreasing trend of scam calls. For example, pretend to be official calls.
Next, Mr. Benson Look. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to ask about SB 128. About patrol conducted by the Fire Services Department. According to the administration's reply, the estimates for inspection of fire service installations is lower comparing two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two. And the government said that it's because of a basket of factors. There was a fire tragedy that broke out earlier, resulting in five deaths. I think that this exposed some of the potential hazards that we have. For example, in the new Lucky House, they did not conduct building inspection for six years, and they did not put in place a fire door for sixteen years. There are a lot of such kind of subdivided units in Hong Kong. And this is a ticking time bomb for us. I believe that inspections of fire service installations is just some kind of basic duties of the Fire Services Department. I hope that the administration will attach importance to the low number of inspections conducted. If the F S D does not have enough manpower to carry out inspection, can they accord priority to old buildings and three new buildings? Does the administration have any ways to tackle the problem expeditiously and take care of the problems with these ticking time bombs? As mentioned by the Secretary, the government will amend the fire safety buildings ordinance, and they target to submit the Legco, submit the bill to the Legco within this year. Does the administration have a timetable for legislation? My third question. Will the government set up cross-departmental working group, including Buildings Department and Fire Services Department and other departments to step up patrol and inspections? Three questions. Secretary? On, about the incident in Jordan. Well, having learned from the experience, we will step up community publicity and enforcement. I will defer to the Director of Fire Services to talk about that further. As mentioned, we will amend the fire safety buildings ordinance. And I think that the amendment will help with the tackling of the issues because we can carry out fire safety improvement works for owners who refuse to comply with the abatement notices and recover fees from them. As mentioned, we will quadruple the penalty for noncompliance of orders and notices issued by the government. We can cancel their leases. Regarding legislative timetable table, we intentionally, while we put initially planned to submit the bill by Q four this year, but we have sped up our work and we will introduce the bill into the Legco by Q two this year instead. I will defer to the Director of Fire Services to supplement. Mr. Yang, thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. We will review our inspection mechanism. Let me talk about the kind of inspections that we do for old buildings. First of all, earlier this year, we reviewed our risk-based inspection against three new buildings and old buildings in Hong Kong. We target to inspect these buildings two times a year to see if there is any potential fire hazards. For buildings covered by this fire safety buildings ordinance, we will inspect these buildings once every year to see if there is any fire hazards. And whenever we receive any complaints on fire doors and obstruction of means of escapes or damage to fire service installations, we will work on that immediately. As mentioned, we conducted two hundred and eighty thousand inspections on fire service installations in buildings. We will also check the certificates issued by examiners. We believe that we can further improve our inspection mechanism. There's another question regarding if you will set up any cross-departmental or interdepartmental working group. Thank you. We will be discussing the Jordan incident with other departments to see if any improvement can be made. Next, Mr. Edmund Wong. Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions. First, SB 131 regarding the wastage rate of ambulance men. According to the administration's reply, there are some one hundred and thirty ambulancesmen that have left the establishment, and there are still ninety-seven vacancies. And some eighty million dollars are involved in overtime pay because vacancies could not be filled. What is the difficulties? Are young people unwilling to join the trade? There are some new development areas to be put in place, as mentioned. In two thousand and thirty-nine, we will have two point five million senior citizens in Hong Kong. So there will be an increasing need for ambulance services. I would also like to ask about SB 145 on the government flying service. Now, the Hong Kong Air Cadet Court has been transferred from the H Y A B to the Security Bureau. G F S has earmarked three point zero four million dollars for Hong Kong A C C. I wonder what was the funding allocated to Hong Kong A C C when it was under H Y A B? We need to transform into an aviation hub. We need more resources to nurture our young people so that we can become such an international aviation hub. I have one more question. I went to the open day of a uniformed group. And I have to commend the Civil Aid Service because they connect their services with national security. And I think that the initiatives that they rolled out in the events were very commendable. I've looked at their estimates, and I see that they spent only some one hundred and four billion, a million dollars. And their expenditure has increased by six point eight percent. They have some three thousand staff members managing some three thousand seven hundred young members. I wonder if there is increase in the number of members of Civil Aid Services. Do we need more resources to encourage young people to join the Civil Aid Service? There was a torrential rain that last year. Is there any funding that is allocated to the Civil Aid Service to combat with such as severe weather conditions? Mr. Wong. You have spent three minutes asking the questions. Secretary? Regarding a recruitment of ambulance men, I will defer to the Director of Fire Services. For the service nature and the form of providing services, we will review that in accordance with the change in environment. Regarding Hong Kong A C C, I don't have the number on the funding that is allocated by the H Y A B to them. I will see if the relevant department have such a figure. Regarding Civil Aid Service question, I will defer to their Secretary General or Director General. Director of Fire Services, please. On the wastage rate of ambulance men, when we replied SB 131, we have included some figures. But these figures were the number But these figures were um the number before we have convened the promotion board. In two thousand and twenty-three, we targeted to recruit one hundred and twenty-six ambulancemen, and eventually we hired some one hundred and twenty-eight ambulancemen, and that is two percent ex um over our target. So we don't have any problem um on a recruitment. We have a number of schemes to recruit athletes, ethnic minorities, and we also have recruitment express for university students to encourage them to join our ambulancemen or firemen grade. Director General of Civil Aviation, while the funding allocated to CAS by HYAB and SB are comparable. And after the transfer, there's been more communication. Uh Mister Wong. CAS is established to encourage young people to undergo training in order to raise their leadership skills and other skills. In two thousand and twenty-two, the number of members stood at seven hundred and forty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three rose to one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight, and in Q one twenty-four, there are some four hundred and fifty-two members who have joined the CAS recent um. We have some leadership uh programs to train our young people and to um enhance their sense of belonging to our country. In terms of equipment, under severe weather conditions, CAS members have to take part in rescue operations, and recently we have procured some jackets, helmets, and um lights or headlights. We've planned to replace some of our gloves. And we have reviewed our equipment based on the severe weather conditions last year, and we will enhance our rescue equipment. Next, Miss Elizabeth Quat. I would like to follow up on SB zero three three and three four regarding non-refoulement claim. In two thousand and twenty-three, some two thousand one hundred and thirty-five applications were received, and that is a seventy percent increase from two thousand and twenty-two. In two uh first two months this year, we have already received six hundred and sixty-seven applications this year, which account for some thirty percent of the total application last year. The number is quite staggering. Most of the um claimants come from Vietnam, and some of them come from Indonesia and the Philippines. How many of these claimants are foreign domestic helper who overstay? Some foreign domestic helper actually engage in job hopping. Do we have any ways to combat such an issue? I know that the government have increased the number of detention facilities, and they will uh detain uh claimants who will pose um safety hazards to the society. Will the government consider detaining all the non-refoulement claimants who come to Hong Kong illegally? If these non-refoulement claimants can break the law and work, then more and more of these claimants would try to come. There are still some fifteen thousand five hundred non-refoulement claimants that are in Hong Kong. Does the government have any plan to combat the issue of bogus claimants? Some one point one billion dollars are spent on these non-refoulement claimants. There are still some eight thousand people who are filing for judicial review. Has the government consulted the judiciary about how we can or when we can complete the handling of judicial reviews of from these non-refoulement claimants? Because during the assessment of the JR, then uh these claimants can continue to stay in Hong Kong, and they pose risk to people's safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. I will answer the questions one by one, and I will do my best. Concerning the number of claims filed by domestic, foreign domestic helpers. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were one thousand forty-one. Two thousand and twenty-two, seven hundred twenty-seven. Two thousand and twenty-three, seven hundred thirty-six. In the first two months this year, one hundred and eighteen. So that was a mild drop compared with year two thousand and twenty-one. Of course, the number is still not ideal. So they should be serving as foreign domestic helpers in Hong Kong rather than becoming non-refoulement claimants. So there are restrictions on job change for foreign domestic helpers. Concerning whether we should put all these claimants in incarceration, there are a lot of factors. First, the court's ruling. Now, the court has ruled that we shouldn't incarcerate every non-refoulement claimant. We have to consider the risk posed to Hong Kong and also whether and also the difficulty in removal. Second, we have to consider the availability of resources. There are still some fifteen thousand claimants in incarceration. And the total number of persons incarcerated in our CSD facilities is just seven thousand to eight thousand. So the non-refoulement claimants have taken up a lot of resources of the CSD. And also, there are a lot of difficulties in managing the non-refoulement claimants, so we have to deal with the situation very carefully. There are still, there are still fifteen thousand cases pending. We are doing a lot to improve the situation. First, we are minimizing the number of non-refoulement claims from the source. We are working it with the origin countries. And we have an API that is for passengers boarding on planes bound for Hong Kong. There is an advanced passenger information system. So for persons with risk of making reformance claim, non-refoulement claim, we would screen them out prior to their arrival. And also, the time for processing a case has been reduced from twenty-five weeks to ten weeks. And also, when the court of first instance judges that a case has no merits for appeal, we can begin the repatriation procedures immediately. And also, we have more judicial resources to deal with the unprocessed cases. Next, Mister Lam Ching Sing. Thank you, Chairman. My question is about reply thirty-eight. That's Mister Bu Tang's question. Vacancies in disciplinary services, CSD and CNED, there are lots of rank-and-file vacancies, some five hundred of them. And each year, there are lots of colleagues leaving their positions. So does that cause an impact on the efficiency of the work? Say, for example, CNED's enforcement work. How are you going to arrest the situation? For the police force, there are some um five, some one thousand colleagues working on a five-day basis, on a trial basis. So can we extend the pilot scheme to all the disciplinary services? So the CSD has difficulties hiring new blood because of the remote location of work and long working hours. And will all the disciplinary services recruit Hong Kong students graduated from mainland universities or post-secondary institutions like the Hong Kong Police Force? Now, my own question, reply one one four. Now, according to the government's reply, the assistance to Hong Kong residents units of the Immigration Department has received a total of four thousand seven hundred and fourteen requests of assistance from Hong Kong residents in Taiwan since the um mainland office in Taiwan ceased operation. Now, during the Hualien earthquake, some Hong Kong residents in Taiwan have made requests for assistance. So how is the government working with the local authority to render support for the Hong Kong citizens there? Could immigration offices gain entry into Taiwan and provide support for our residents? Secretary, two questions. Concerning offering support to Hong Kong residents in Taiwan, I would defer the question to the Commissioner, the Director of Immigration. About the vacancies in the disciplinary services in two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, there are some five thousand nine hundred positions not filled. That is seventeen point eight percent. CSD, ten point zero one percent, and Immigration Department, seven percent. FSD, the situation is better, two point five percent. Now, GFS, sixteen percent vacancy, but you have to consider the smaller establishment. So for CSD and the police force, we have difficulties hiring enough new blood. Now, we are enhancing our recruitment model. For example, we are recruiting Hong Kong residents in the mainland. Besides the police force, all the disciplinary services are recruiting Hong Kong students studying in the mainland. And various forces are extensively recruiting university students. We are conducting job fair and experiential days to pique their interest. We also conduct overseas recruitment exercises. For students returned from overseas, we would offer internship positions to them to attract them to join our forces on retention, on retaining our talents. The work of various forces is different. For some, the five-day working pattern can work because of their work nature, but not for other departments. Now, we offer deferments of retirements to colleagues soon to be retired, and we also offer post-retirement employment contracts to those retired officers as well. Now, please be brief, Director of Immigration. Thank you. Now, for assistance calls from Taiwan, we mainly offer help in terms of professional information. During the Hualien earthquake, about ten Hong Kong residents were unable to leave the area. So we provided information, including flight schedules, to them. Thank you. Next, Professor Priscilla Leng. Chairman, my question is about reply one eight seven. About the progress of the legislative amendments work on the fire safety building ordinance. Now, according to the reply, now um in the Yau Chiu Mung districts, there are thirty cases under the FSWS for one Chi at twenty-one. So these are districts with more older buildings. So that is the Fire Safety Improvement Works subsidy scheme, FSWS. I have been following on the legislative amendments work on the fire safety building ordinance for ten odd years. There is usually extensive discussion on the topic after major fire in Hong Kong. The previous two terms of the government has made some progress, for example, mandating the installation of water tanks on the rooftop of older buildings. Now, the gen, the public supports amending the legislation to empower the director of Fire Services to carry out fire safety improvements works for owners for emergency cases. Now, I have paid, I have paid visits to a lot of older buildings. A lot of owners have gone AWOL, so they cannot comply with the fire hazard abeyment notices. So the remaining households have to take up the responsibility, and it is a heavy burden on them. Some of these residents even prefer the governments to step in because they want to comply with the law, but they don't have the ability. And for certain buildings, there is no OC, so they, the residents cannot act on their own, so they need your help. Now, in two thousand and fourteen, I propose a private bill for the same purpose. Now, we should make reference to the building works ordinance. Now, after the collapse of number forty-five Jade at Mata White Road, the Building Authority was empowered to carry out emergency improvement works, but not the Director of Fire Services. To prevent tragedies from happening again, we need to act swiftly. There is a timetable for the legislative amendments, but given the recent fire, we should speed up the process. Now, we can't allow owners to abuse the system so that they can sit on their hands and wait for the government to step in. And also, the workload, the additional workload on the FSD would be very heavy. So I seek a reply from the Director of Fire Services. Do you need more funding to hire more officers for this additional duty? Second, how can we implement a reporting system among the owners to report suspected abuse? So that you can strike a balance between safety and workload. Now, this is, these are mostly opinions. Secretary, any reply? Thank you. Concerning the legislative proposal, we are not asking for additional manpower. We are redeploying our existing resources to meet the additional demand. Now, the upcoming bill will provide help to buildings with OCs. And for buildings without an OC, the bill will ensure that building owners can apply for subsidies under the Fire Safety Improvement Work Subsidy Scheme.
Next, Mister Gary Chan. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on SB zero four seven about installation of CCTV to prevent and detect crimes. Chairman, you may have noticed that over the past decades, a country and other countries over the world have installed a large number of CCTVs to detect and combat crimes. The administration said that they will install two thousand CCTVs in some six hundred and fifteen locations across the territories. Two thousand CCTVs may sound a lot, but if we compare ourselves with, for example, London, they have some sixty six hundred and ninety thousand CCTV. Singapore, they have some sixty thousand. Macau, there are some one thousand seven hundred CCTVs. If we divide two thousand CCTVs If we divide two thousand C C T Vs by eighteen districts, there are only some one hundred C C T V per district. I wonder if it's useful. Can the low number of C C T Vs actually detect and combat crimes? The C C T Vs that we have are not very high-tech. They only record people walking by, and they don't have face recognition technology equipped. Chairman, the police on the mainland rely on the C C T V to arrest some eighty refugees or um criminals at the, uh less, um at the Mister Chan's concert. And actually, London police also rely on C C T V's uh face recognition technology to arrest people or criminals. So I wonder if the administration can enhance the technology of the C C T V. Um also, the police is faced with a shortage of manpower. Can we ease the burden of the frontline officers by having these high-tech C C T Vs and increase the detection rate? Well, a few days ago, there were some media reports um reporting the installation of C C T V. Most people support the idea, but some people think that we should enlarge the signs saying that a C C T V is in operation, so that they will be made aware of the presence of the C C T V. If they have suggestions for the locations of C C T V, how can they do that? Mister Chan has proposed some figures of the number of C C T Vs in other countries. Uh please reply to his question. Commissioner of Police.
Thank you. What is the purpose of installing C C T V? It's the same across the world. We want to detect and combat crimes so that people can live in contentment and work in peace. Regarding the number of C C T Vs, we plan to install two thousand C C T Vs across the territory. Is that enough? Well, we definitely think that we can increase the number of C C T Vs to be installed. As mentioned by Mister Gary Chang, for U K, in the nineties, they have started installing C C T V. Up till today, they have seven point three million C C T V in their country. For London, their population is some nine million people. They have eight hundred thousand C C T Vs. For Singapore, they have ninety thousand C C T Vs. But I know that by two thousand and thirty, they target to raise the number of C C T V to two hundred thousand. According to the Singaporean police, Singaporean residents actually want the police to install more C C T Vs where they live. Law-abiding citizens definitely want us to install C C T V so that we can combat and detect crimes in order for them to live in contentment and work in peace. Well, two thousand C C T Vs is just the first step. As to whether or not we will put in place advanced technology in our C C T V, we've been looking into that. And we're studying the C C T V systems of other countries. As for the face recognition technology, we will definitely see if we can include such a technology in our C C T V so that we can actually detect and combat crimes. As for Mister Chan's last point, we have received some comments after installation of fifteen C C T Vs, and we're looking into that to see if we can improve on some areas. For Q R code, uh perhaps we should enlarge it so that people can scan the Q R code more easily. I encourage people to relay their comments to our P C R O of our district police stations. Thank you. There are still three members who would like to speak for the first round. After Doctor Ho Isam Lee has put the question, I will conclude the session. Miss Maggie Chan, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on S B seventeen and twenty. According to the Security Bureau's reply, they said that by two thousand twenty-five, they want to complete the new Huanggang Port Building. And the Hong Kong and Shenzhen municipal governments have reached a consensus on the collaborative inspection and joint clearance mode. In the future, um people who want to cross the border will only have to have their documents checked once. So I wonder how much time can be saved after adopting such a mode? And if this collaborative inspection and joint clearance mode is effective, will you extend the mode to other B C Ps? And if you have such a plan, uh to which part will you put in place the mode? Now, um digital G B A initiatives has been proposed, and I know that the three-year action plan has been put in place for digital G B A, and there is a unified U S M initiative. So will the government consolidate the handling of home return permit? Do you have such a plan? Secretary.
Regarding the time saved by implementing the collaborative inspection and joint clearance mode, I don't have such a figure. I would defer to Director of Immigration. We want to implement collaborative inspection and joint clearance mode in all boundary control points. After implementing the mode in Huanggang, we will also introduce such a mode in the Shuttlecock Port. And the mainland authorities have approved of such an arrangement. For existing boundary control points, if we want to implement, this mode is rather difficult because of its design. Now we are looking into whether there is room for us to implement such a mold in um some of the boundary control points. Regarding the identity cards of the cities in the Greater Bay Area, I believe that the U S M will facilitate the members of the public to make use of services on the mainland. That will not replace our home return permit by adopting this unified identity authentication platform of Guangdong Province. I would see if the Director of Immigration have anything to add. Well, this idea of the collaborative inspection and joint clearance has to do with checking of documents, mostly. Thank you. Next, Doctor Chau Man Khaong.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on S B zero one zero about the time taken to clear vehicles. I know that there are more, there are some boundary control points that will extend their service hours. For Lock Machao and um Hong Kong Macau Jiu High Bridge will operate twenty-four hours. But for Shuttlecock, that closes at ten P M. For Shenzhen Bay, it closes at ten, uh midnight as well. For Cargo, it operates twenty-four hours a day. I wonder if there are more ports that can operate twenty-four hours a day. I know that we have to look into the cost and manpower arrangement. For Hanyu Way Control Point, it closes at ten P M. And some people could not return to Hong Kong after ten P M. For like Mentemto and Shuttlecock registered vehicles, can you allow them to use the Hong Kong Jiu Hua Macau Bridge instead? Perhaps you can talk to the mainland authorities. Um I would also like to ask about S B zero three eight. There are less vacancies for inspector rank, but for rank and file ranks, um vacancies for police force and fire services department, it is on the rise. Why is that? For immigration uh department, uh C N E D, as we have more and more boundary control points, I think that they need more manpower. Can we introduce uh auxiliary officer mechanism for these two departments? Thank you. Regarding uh service hours of B C P and manpower. Thank you, Secretary. We have received some comments from members of the public. They are asking if we can um start uh the operation of some boundary control point earlier, for example, to seven A M. After the New Year's Eve uh experience, some people have been asking us to have some boundary control points to operate twenty-four hours a day. Of course, we have to look into the people flow before we can put in place such an arrangement. We've talked to the mainland authorities to see if we will extend some P C Ps on certain days. Regarding vacancy of a rank and file and inspectors rank. Well, the vacancies of inspector is lower than rank and file. That's because we don't have that many inspectors compared to rank and file um officers. That is why it's easier for us to fill the vacancies for inspector rank. For auxiliary officers uh mechanism, is that applicable to all disciplined um services? Well, there's a historic um or history to auxiliary mechanism. There are other ways for us to meet the manpower demand. We sometimes um extend the retirement of some officers, and we hire retired officers on a contract basis so that we can retain experienced staff to um to help us. Thank you. Next, Doctor Ho Isam Lee. Thank you, Chairman.
I would like to follow up on S B zero two two two, S B zero two five on non-refoulement claims. I have to comment the administration's reply. Under the new policy, for unsubstantiated claims, the number uh have increased by sixty-three percent, and the time of processing has shortened. I would like to put two questions. First, um in S B zero two three, regarding inter- interception of cases, the government said that they have identified the characteristics of people who abuse the systems. Can you share with us more um in this area? For unsubstantiated claims, the claimants of these claims, uh how many of them actually returned to Hong Kong after they are removed? I know that uh some of them are removed by force because they were not willing to leave on their own accord. My third question. I would like to ask for some figures. If you don't have these numbers, you can supplement after the meeting and writing. For large-scale removal or voluntary repatriation, what are the numbers? There are some nine uh large-scale removal operation. They have removed some two hundred and twenty-five claimants. So I don't think that the large-scale removal operation is that large scale or large in scale. My fourth question. The number of claimants is on the rise, but in terms of humanitarian measures, the cost involved is on the decline. From year two thousand and nineteen to twenty, some four hundred and eighty-two million dollars are spent. But for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, it's increased to five hundred and eighty-three million dollars. And there is a drop in terms of average spending on a per claimant. Four questions.
I think the secretary had answered in detail in terms of non-refoulement's claim. So please do your best, Secretary. For parts not answered, please submit um supplementary information afterwards. Thank you. Concerning the A P I system, the Advanced Passenger Information System, we would profile risky persons, but I can't tell you the details of our profile profiling system. Otherwise, it would lose our edge. So usually, persons repatriated will not be allowed to come back. Concerning removal cost per head, every year we are spending some forty or fifty million dollars on removal of unsubstantiated claimants. So more information would be given to the member afterwards. Now on your last question, it seems that the estimate for two thousand twenty-three is at seven hundred and forty million dollars. Now it is reduced to five hundred eighty-three million dollars. Now we expect more non-refoulement's claimants to come. However, because of the success in our upstream prevention measures, the number of claimants has reduced. Now, we are very efficient, so I will allow Mister Dennis Leng to speak as well. Three minutes, questions and answers. Thank you. A brief question, reply seventy-nine on the ele- electric mobility devices. A question by um from Mister Li. Now I still see a lot of electric mobility devices on the road. Can you please tell me what you are doing to crack down on these offenders? In the mainland, this is a very common mobility devices. However, the speed limit is limited at twenty kilometers or below. But in Hong Kong, we don't have such a restriction. Mister Raymond Siu. Thank you. Concerning the number of enforcements conducted, I don't have the number now. However, at our regional offices and also the headquarters, we would enforce the law very stringently, and we would prosecute each and every case. Now if you see black spots where there is widespread use of electric mobility devices, please contact our our P C P O, P C R O, so we will, so that we can take enforcement actions. Thank you. That concludes the Q and A session. I thank the Security Bureau and the team for attending. The next session will commence at five forty P M. Uh thank you.